Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. First order of business is to accept bids on the unsafe building cleanup.
Yep.
Clean up and removal. Sixty-three forty-one Edwards Street in Williamsburg. We advertised for the bids in the Playmio and the Western Wing news. And I'm not sure how many we got, but...
Looks like we have three.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, bid bottoming player. Yeah, actually, somebody called yesterday in an accident, and I said, yes.
First bid is from Curly Contracting. This one out of Richmond. Second bid is from J.A. Schreuer Group from Muncie. All sides are blue. And the third, final bid, just all the pushing received on time, is from B&amp;B Construction of Williamsburg. I move that we take these bids under consideration. Second.
We have a motion in a second to take these three bids under advisement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signifying, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Steve, any, anything further on this process?
Well, I had a couple of questions for our legal counsel. So, I've had a couple of questions. If you remember, this is the one with the boats. And the one boat is kind of in the county right of way and kind of on the neighbor's property. And I've had questions, does that boat go as well? And so... I mean, it's kind of in the right of way and kind of on this property.
Well, I think the whole boat issue requires a little work. You're gonna have to identify the boat, see if you can find it. Any identification on it, run it through the system, make sure that it's not stolen or whatever. And if it isn't, it becomes, there's nothing other than that. It's gonna presumptively be abandoned. If it's on somebody else's property, then the one we filed against, then we probably need to approach that owner and say, "Okay, if we take this off your property, if he says no, fine, let him have it."
Yeah, like I say, part of it's on the neighbor's property, part of it's in the right of way, and part of it's in on this property.
We want it all that way. It's gotta get out of the right of way.
Yeah, yeah, they've been in the right of way. Apparently, the sheriff's department was up there, and they indicated they don't deal with boats. And so, that's what we were told, and so...
Hopefully, don't have any floods around here.
Yeah. So, anyway. They said if it was a car, they could have done something with it, but since it's a boat, they didn't do anything.
I have no idea where that limitation comes from, but in their own self, supposedly.
But at any rate, those boats have been there for a little bit, so...
So, the boat's not in the quote?
Huh?
Well, they don't know how to handle it.
No, no, they don't know what to do, because the one, the boats are in the quote, except the one is kind of on this property, the right of way and the neighbor's property. And so, they said that we take that boat too. I don't know.
Good warning.
I would assume you would.
I would, yeah.
I would say get it out of there. Get it out there, but...
But the key is finding out if there's any condition ownership. You're gonna need identification, and I think there's...
Yeah, just 'cause they have the sheriff's department hall number, make sure that it's not stolen and...
Yeah, and report it to the ISP, I assume.
Yeah, just run it through the NCIC.
So, are these boats on trailers, or are they laying on the ground?
Laying.
So, they couldn't really tow them?
No, they'll have to bring like a roll back.
Yeah, they'll only roll...
They're like that, they're just sitting there. And this is the one question, it's kind of here in the neighbors.
Must have been nice boats at one time.
Well, they were nice boats at one time. I mean, they're like little cabin crews, but they're not so much anymore.
So, maybe some of these bids will be incompatible. Some may include that boat.
Well, I think everybody looked at the boats. I think they understand the boats go, but just wanna make sure.
Well, there's quite a variance in the bids.
There's variance.
Some, yeah, there are. Just the difference...
Do you need to read these off, or you don't need to read them off, or...
No, we're taking them under...
Okay, so you want to award this today?
No.
Because I'll be getting calls later today.
Well, just prepare a report to them. In fact, you have...
Workshop or...
Workshop.
Workshop, having the budget hearing this afternoon.
You might call them and make sure that the disparity included both boats.
Okay.
Make sure you're comparing apps to app.
Two bids, you throw a blanket over, the one is just almost three times the other two.
Yeah.
Make sure they're including both boats.
Okay.
Okay, so his first step needs to be to check...
To see if they're including both, all the boats.
But also see if the boats are stolen.
That's about all you can do, then. If not, I think, given the situation, you can pre-rolls. I think abandonment would then be assumed, you know?
Yeah, and so...
I think if, if that one boat is partially on the property in question, partially on our right of way, and then only fractionally in somebody else's property, we talk to them, and we're gonna remove the boat.
Yeah.
Is there any, do they have any objection?
Or if they want it, then they need to move it onto their property entirely. We don't... So, I also need to contact the sheriff's department today, and I'm sure they probably won't do this today to get out there, so...
If you need to go there, just let me know.
Okay.
I think you've got a week. We've gone back to us.
So, we're not, we're not going to...
Yeah, we've made two more times in July, so...
Correct.
Okay, so if I start, I'm not talking to these people all the time, you're not gonna award it today.
We are not going to award it today.
Too much consideration to begin with.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? All right, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Want this on next week's agenda?
Maybe, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So, Ron, we have copies, three copies of this memorandum of understanding between the city by and through its park and recreation department and Wayne County by and through its board of commissioners. That, this is on the gorge activation.
G Street, is this Richmond Avenue Bridge?
Sure, I'm not sure.
What's the topic?
I'm looking. The White Water Gorge Park is a 146-acre park, blah, blah, blah. City is undertaking efforts referred to as gorge activation. City owns and maintains real property and that.
County should have, should have two bridge numbers, seven twenty-one and seven fifteen.
That's it, seven oh five and seven twelve.
Close. That's, that is Richmond Avenue.
Okay, and so, this had to do with the right of way and how...
It had to do with giving them assurances so we could avoid some of the implications that their grant monies had to avoid having to provide them replacement properties if it broadly limit the, their, their grant activities. So, it's a comfort. Basically, it's an MOU to give them a comfort. It's been approved by Brandon and by our consultant, as far as our terms.
Okay.
It's very similar to what we, thank, you know, very similar to what we did on G Street. I don't know if we have any bats to deal with.
We would need to approve this, because the way it was explained to me, we had already approved it, but the, but the contracts were misplaced on their way to the city.
Oh, okay, approved very well could be the case.
But it wouldn't hurt to approve them again.
Yeah, and I didn't check. I thought, I thought we'd done it, because that's when I think somebody wanted to know where it was.
You think we've already approved it?
I thought we did.
I think you did, but I...
Just to be safe.
You can affirm your, your approval.
Yeah.
That's what Bobby's message was, that she checked and they were approved.
Yeah.
They have been approved, okay. So, all we would need to do is sign it.
Next, sign it, yeah.
And we'll send them to...
I'm not sure if it's just your signature.
It's all three of us. It's all three of us, and then, once we sign it, they'll send it back to the city for their signatures, so...
They have the original pieces.
Can we send it certified mail this time? Well, it's...
I'd be happy for you to hand deliver it if you want.
More than happy.
It's just an MOU, it's, I mean, which is nondescript, legally, it's nondescript. I don't know what an MOU is. It's not, but it's not interlocal, so we don't have to take the council.
Okay. So, we will sign these while our friends from Dunn are coming to the table to join us. And we will start with them.
Get some chairs.
As soon as we're done.
There's, there's two already here.
Well, I'm just looking. Any...
Yep.
You're all shook up.
Now, now.
Why, we gave you that chair.
Thank you for consideration and...
All right, welcome, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming today. You've got some papers for us, I assume?
I do, and I'm trying to not, you're great. Okay, so the goal today is to talk about potential benefit changes and the status of your plan and what budget might be, okay? We've already done the renewal, so we've gone through all the big numbers.
Mary, you're gonna...
They're just staggered.
It's just that one.
Okay, we've got extra stuff.
Yeah, we do. Okay, so, I'm gonna go pretty quick here on a couple of things, and then I'll pass out a few things as we get to them, so it's not complicated too much. Jeff, does that sound like a game plan, or do you have something? You wanna go some other direction? Okay. We have, we have a pretty, with our new system, we have a very robust reporting system. I wanted to give you a sample here. I'm not planning to go through every line of these reports. And I'm kind of the nerd with the numbers type thing, I'm the numbers person. There's a lot of information in here, some of it kind of curious, and how we use some reports in the background. So, I want you to know that we've got all these reporting packages. We could give it to you monthly, you know, we're gonna try and give them to you quarterly. They're there, but I can click on everything in here, and Greg's my guru on this. He drills down, and he can give me names and give me exactly what's going on, and so there's a lot behind it. So, Mary Anne's been very good through the years of saying, well, what, how many people would we have that da-da-da-da? So, this gives us a lot more at our fingertips, where, keep talking, Mary Anne, I can drill down into that. So, I want you to know it was there, okay?
Okay.
Now, there's too many reports, and you don't have time to look at all these numbers, so I'm not gonna overwhelm you with this. I just want you to know that if you've got a thought, and Kim can call me and say, can you tell us? You probably can't, okay? So, I'm just gonna buzz through here kind of quickly. First page, you know, we've got some statistics up there, how much billed over six million dollars. We allowed four million, we actually paid three million. It's up there on the left-hand side on that first report. You know, average calendar days from the date of service to the date paid, twenty-two. If you guys remember, that's pretty good, because remember, you have to go to the doctor. They have to bill us, it's gotta go through the repricing, get to us, and those kind of things. So, all that's positive. Next page, hey, what do we pay your claims on? Well, your biggest category is inpatient services, we would expect that. But look at your second line item. Drugs. Okay, so you know, I hit you pretty hard, kept making my little jams about, we gotta watch the drugs, we gotta keep on top of that, so we're gonna talk about some things today, but just be aware of that. I'm gonna flip a couple more pages to the ER report. Oh, I like this one, I drill down more in this one. On the right-hand side, that pop box there.
ER report, okay.
How many frequent flyers do I have? Thirty-seven people went to the ER once, twenty went twice, ten went three times. You've got two people that went six or more ER visits. And the timeframe I'm looking is from January one through June thirtieth. So, somebody's been more than, two people have been more than six times in six months. Curious? Yeah, we look at that stuff.
I mean, sometimes those are, those could be cancer patients that have a problem, and they run in.
Reacting to a drug or...
What we kind of look at is making sure it's not somebody that could be using Swift MD and spending all their money on...
So, turn, turn the next page. Which ones would have been avoidable, obviously avoidable? Sisitis, conjunctivitis, as my daughter would know that, as red eye, pink eye. You know, little kids. Urinary tract infection, those are ones identified that could have used Swift MD or could have gone to someplace other, did not need emergency-level care, okay? So, do we remind people that we've got Swift MD? Maybe this is a new employee, and they didn't get the message, even though we give it to them, and it's in the packet, and, you know, if you haven't used it yet, you might not realize it's for that, that type thing. So, this, these reports give me information, they look good, but you know, if I'm on a hunt of something, we can drill down and figure out what this is. Does that make sense?
But out of hundreds, thirty-two, you had three that were potentially...
Potentially, yeah, we had three that were known.
And that's a good thing, I mean, that means good partners.
Right.
Running there for their primary care doctors.
Now, half of those might have been, you really didn't need the ER. But, you know, giving people the bin of doubt, these are easy things to pick out that, hey, we really know this doesn't take ER level. Okay? So, and really, we've got inpatient reports. I'm gonna flip you on way back. Oh, we've got one that says readmission report, and it's blank right here.
Oh, yay. Everybody's happy about that.
Yes, we are. You've got a couple of counts that depend on where they're located. It seems that certain hospitals have a lot of readmissions.
My, Reed is our primary readmissions.
Yes. Yes, so you, you wanna watch that. Why are certain hospitals, why are they bringing you back? Why, you know, is it the surgeon owned by the hospital, and we keep readmitting? Or what, what's, what's going on there? Yours is not sticking out like us with them, there are none here. That's a good thing, yes. Am I making sense how I kind of look at these things? And again, we've got a lot to talk about.
It was red flag, you picked out all the big red flags that can drive across.
Yeah, there's a pharmacy report back there, it says pharmacy...
Let's talk about that one real quick. So, if you look at the, the two graphs at the very bottom there of that page, the pharmacy. So, when they compare, it does a little benchmarking, so it compares your group with a medical benchmark. So, you're running pretty close, you're just above the benchmark on the medical side, but then if you look down at the... Yeah, it's the pharmacy report. One more page, two more pages, one more after that.
There you go.
Yeah. So, then you look at the pharmacy, I mean, I know we're trying to be real aggressive on the pharmacy side, but your pharmacy paid us half million dollars compared to a benchmark at three-quarters of a million. So, that shows you that, I guess, some of the positions we're taking with patient assistance are starting to pay off, or at least more than what most...
That's a gold start for my team, actually, because specialty drugs are out of control. I'm going to call them the TB drugs, you see a lot of them. We have diligently pursued patient assistance, and we've gotten several hundred thousand dollars this year, not on your plan, that we've been able to get the pharmaceutical manufacturer to pay for the drug, okay?
But that's gonna go away down...
Well, it's, it could. So, I, you know, we're hitting, we're, we're accomplishing what we set out to, but we need to keep. There, it's a game. They figured out what game the payers are playing. Now, we're losing patient assistance, so now we're gonna talk about, well, where do we get those drugs? Maybe we can get them through K or X at a fraction of the cost, those kind of things. So, we have to keep being diligent about this. But what we've done is working. Just how much longer can it keep working?
On this pharmacy report, the top big box in the little, it says, what is my medical and pharmacy spend by age and gender? The color coding is, what is the gender color coding?
That does not have gender on that part.
Okay, it's just age, okay.
It's just age. J-codes are infusions or injections, okay? So, the blues are the infusion or injection, so you can see where they're taking the delivery of the medicine. You know all your diet drugs or diabetes drugs? They're all, they've made them all, they've made them all shots and, for weight loss. And actually, they, they could have come out with pills, they will come out with pills, but they've made a fortune off the injections. Now, they're moving towards pills, which are a lot cheaper, same thing. But, hey, let's do MS drugs. They came out with Avonex was a pill, worked great. Oh, well, you know what? That's not as effective as a weekly shot, so they do the shots. And now, they do the monthly IVs. So, the cost went from nine hundred dollars a month for a pill to, you know, two thousand dollars a month, twenty-five hundred for the weekly injection, and now it's thirty thousand dollars a month to go have your infusion. Or we intervene and say, why don't you try this? We, we've got stuff therapy here, you gotta try the pill first. But, hey...
Is the dosage the same?
Oh, but, you know, this is longer lasting if you go once a month. It's so much more convenient.
No.
I'll take the pill once a day, or, or get myself a shot once a week, rather than go sit and get an IV for an hour. That's my personal opinion, but, you know. So, all sorts of things like that.
So, we don't know gender distribution, but...
We, we do, it's not on this, I mean, we can drill down and have another graph.
Typically, is the IV then administered to a physician's office?
Uh, no, they're sending you to the hospital infusion center. We do have some endocrine, like Crohn's, where they have it in the office, but most of them are at the hospital.
So, so that thirty thousand you mentioned includes both the drug and the charge from the hospital?
Correct, but do you know that we could get it whitebacked from TrueRx for probably fifteen hundred dollars, two thousand? Now, we still have to pay the hospital a thousand dollars to infuse it, but whitebacking means TrueRx is able to ship that medicine to the hospital pharmacy, and they accept it. Some hospitals refuse to accept it, because obviously, there's a moneymaker there.
And they control it.
And they control it, okay.
So, we might, we might make the call, and then they'll say, well, we don't permit whitebacking at all, so the patient wants to come here, so they can kind of shut us down sometimes.
Whitebacking is...
Whitebacking, bang, okay. So, we, we've switched hospitals. Some of it can be done by home health. The nurse come to your house and give it to you.
So, we can structure the plan so that it does not pay for going to a hospital to have the infusion?
I don't think you can deny it, because you've got cancer patients that would have to have access to that. That's chemo, things like that, but...
For certain medications, or can you structure it so that...
Well, before we approve it, we go through all of our steps, so we keep trying to find alternatives. So, what we need from you guys is, when somebody calls you and complains, they're not, my doctor said, go to that hospital and get it, and Dunn's not doing that. Be patient, there may be more to that story, and we may be trying to save you twenty-five thousand dollars a month. There, there's probably more than one side there.
We singled out weight loss in the past, I mean, you know...
Well, I mean, you have to, you have to have a further diagnosis of prediabetic, normally, don't you?
You, you have to qualify, so flip the page.
That's what I was just looking at.
Cancer versus weight loss, we can drill.
So, what I'm saying is, we do a lot of work behind the scenes, and my staff's pulling their hair out. You know, you got, it just, as soon as you figure it out, then they change the rules or something. But let us negotiate, let us do our due diligence. What happens is, a patient goes to the doctor, and they want it today. You know, it's gonna take a week or two before a specialty drug is approved and goes through the process, okay? It's not a, he told me this morning, I should be able to go to Reed and get my thirty thousand dollar infusion today. Patience, but we may get it for twelve hundred dollars another way. Okay, so this, so let me tell you. Ozempic, 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 Monjorno, Ribelsis, Jardiance, Descovy, Monjorno, Tralissine, Jardiance. These are all diabetic drugs, also used for weight loss, okay? So, you see where it's going. Okay, next page.
So, what is the paid versus PY paid?
Uh, prior year paid.
Prior year paid, okay.
Did you catch that?
And that's some of that, because some of those drugs are new.
Now, there's a podcast out right now about these diabetic drugs, whereas the new epidemic that they're prescribing these, they have doctors just prescribing them to...
They're designed for you to stay on for life. Are they effective? Yes. Do you lose some weight? However, you, you have to qualify medically to be able to get them. I mean, we do have, it takes a prior authorization, okay?
All of these claimants have a touch of diabetes, as the sun does?
Or prediabetes, yeah. They qualify by their BMI and their A1C, which is their sugar level and...
And their medical records, they have to be...
Medical records. So, we live in Southern Indiana.
Do you have any idea how many different individuals are represented by this half million dollar pay?
Um, I can get, look over...
We'll, we'll probably run into it, we were talking about the TrueRx report.
Yeah, we are, I think I've got out some other reports for you. Anyway...
When you were talking about those, using these weight loss drugs, because the weight loss drugs make people mentally not wanna eat as much, they're also using it for addiction treatment too, that's what you're talking about, right?
Yes. Oh, I'm sure they're gonna be approved for all sorts of things before we're done. Okay, we've got other reports in here, but...
Just one more. So, we went from the prior year of a hundred and sixty-three thousand to, to current year of four hundred and seventy-six thousand on just this list of...
Right, just that list, right.
Is that a gang wage, June? It's not full, it's not full-time?
So, you're gonna pay a million dollars on diabetic drugs this year?
No, this is a full year, this is twelve months.
Oh, it's twelve, it's the prior twelve months, I'm sorry. Okay, so you, you get, so you can see how I use these reports to drill down and get more specific, and then I can expand this list and... and then I can expand this list and I, I can even get to names on this list. You don't have any names in here. Yeah, so, I just wanted you to see that and understand that we're able to provide that level of detail. Greg, get these two reports. We're going, I'm moving right on into the budget part now.
I showed these charts before, these are, this is a bowling twelve report. So, every month, it looks back to see how much the plan spent in the previous twelve months. So, when you see January of twenty-three in the first column at three point eight million, that's your actual spend going back into twenty-twenty-two. And then it just moves forward. So, if you were looking at this for budgeting, I can tell you by looking at this real quick, the highest spend you had in twelve-month period over the last couple of years was four point three million, and your lowest was in April of this year at three point five million, it looks like. So, a couple of other things I added on here, the, the really thick solid dotted line is just seven percent medical trend. So, that's, if you just had inflation, that's what it would trend up to be. The little more fine dotted line is your actual trend. So, yours is a lot flatter than medical inflation.
So, for the last year and a half, you, you guys are beating the national average trend, inflation trend for medical insurance, which is good, we want to keep you there. And your orange report?
Yeah, and the orange one, this just takes out, this just gives a visual of the actual medical claims that are hitting, and then the drug claims in the, so there's a dark orange, which is your medical claims, and then the lighter orange is your drugs. Now, April, March and April of twenty-three, that was when we were doing our system conversion. So, that spike is really January, February, March, kind of between two months. But your, your trend line is still pretty flat there, but I can look at this real quick and tell you that you probably spend on average about two hundred thousand a month, two-ten, on medical, and your drugs are running probably thirty, forty, it looks like, just ballparking it. So, these graphs are just to let you see what's happening below the reinsurance before reimbursements.
Okay.
So, there was a seasonality spike in May?
Uh, no, we had a, I, there's a specific large claim we had.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
But here, here's the thing. You guys budget an amount, send us kind of a set amount each month. It, it varies with some head year, but it, it's pretty low. Your claims are all over the place. One month, we have big claims, one month, we have little claims. You know, we pay them as they hit.
Sure.
So, again, Greg's lines and all are to give you some, some averages here, so you know whether your monthly budget is going to fit our needs. Does that make sense? So, I'm going to dig into this budget report for you.
So, how much of the, of the variability from month to month is related to deductibles?
Related to what?
Deductibles, so in other words, as we start the year.
I mean, I mean, the first three or four months, your chronic people are all meeting their deductible, so that helps a little bit. I think the spike that you see also in May here is, we're going to talk about change healthcare a little bit.
Yes, yes.
Because when you look at March and April, those are really low months. But what happened was, a lot of hospitals and physicians use change healthcare to file their electronic claims, and that got hacked in February, so that delayed claims coming in.
Okay.
Yeah, some, some hospitals changed vendors, you know, and this is all before it even gets to us, so it wasn't a hack on your system or our system, but that would explain a little bit of that spike too. Because you can see you're pretty level there.
Prior delays, delays from prior for hacking, we often process the claims that were caught and hacked.
We didn't get it, we didn't get them in thirty days, we probably had them in forty-five or sixty.
So, so the spike in March was really January, February, March. So, we didn't have a spike, and that was a lot of deductibles, okay? Now, April and May, definitely was change healthcare.
We feel like we're probably caught up now, but right after we got through with the change healthcare in late February, we had a cinching hit in May.
Cinching, St. Vincent's in May. Yes, they are.
Do you know yet how June twenty-four looked?
It, it was, yeah, it, no, it was.
It settled down.
Low, yeah, pretty low. Okay, so, here is a budget page, I've got all sorts of information. Let me just talk you through, I was trying to make a narrative to talk you through this. Okay, so the first chart here, I went back, and you've got more than one plan, but I used Plan B, the middle plan. That's kind of our base plan there, okay? Not the real rich one, not the high deductible, really high, this is our base. So, I went back and did your COV rate, not including the two percent, which is our full rate, okay? So, I've got your four tiers there for, so July of twenty-twenty, started that plan year, our premium rate was one thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars, seventy-six cents per month for a single. Jump over to what our renewal is for Jan, July one of twenty-four. It's nine hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty cents. And if you go through the single rate each month, you can see we've had a decline every year since twenty.
Is that the mean affordability requirements?
Nope, that's because our cost has gone down. We've had great renewals, and so how we're managing the plans, the discounts we get, watching the drugs, that's a big part, negotiating the reinsurance, all contributes to that. That's a great trend line right there.
True.
Now, don't be surprised if one of these years, it, it's not going to go down forever. It, it's going to go back up, and hopefully, we can, you know, we're not going to spike up. We're going to have reasonable years there, but I just thought that was a picture for you to see that.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you realize that, but your rates, your total rates have gone down for the last five years.
But what this doesn't reflect is the insured's copays and maximum amount of pocket and that sort of thing.
That's correct, but that all comes down to, if they have a higher deductible, that's that much less the plan's paying. I have that, those suggestions here.
To get the full picture, we need to see the other side.
Sure, you need to see the other side too, what your benefits have been.
Absolutely.
Okay? Do I think adding a five thousand dollar plan helped you? I do. People like to pay less, a lot of people don't have that many bills. Okay? Or, or once every ten years, I had something, but the other years, I didn't meet my deductibles. So, having more than one plan design caters to different needs, and I, I would suggest that we continue that. Okay? So, next part, and I, I kind of put the narrative here. As a self-funded plan, you buy specific, which is on an individual, and aggregate insurance, that's on the group as a whole. We go over that aggregate report every time we meet. You self-fund the first hundred and fifty thousand dollars on an individual's claim. Okay? Where do you get your funding? Employee contributions, payroll contributions, and then your contributions as the employer. That's your funding. Okay?
What about rebates, I mean?
That goes in the plan. We, we don't keep any rebates. Well, yeah, it can be. I mean, everything, every hundred thousand that we get, which your rebates have been running a little over that a year, that goes back into the plan to offset claims cost. So, that is not, we don't keep any part of it to that. And TrueRx gives you back all the available, all the rebates. They're not taking a big cut. It's a pass-through contract, which is important. Yes. Okay, so, you need to be able to fund the maximum cost plus some runout, and we're going to get to that runout part here on the backside. So, I did some estimates on this year's contribution level. I know we're doing twenty-five budget, but you need to know where you are. Your employee contributions are averaging about fifty-three thousand dollars a month. That's how much your employees are contributing to this. Six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars a year. Okay, your contributions, I, I went back to twenty-twenty to tell you how much your annual and your monthly contributions have averaged. Okay? So, I've got the first six months of twenty-four for the, what your average has been. I don't know what your second half, I'm going to assume it's double that for the rest of the year, because you're probably on the calendar year budget.
We are.
Yeah. Okay, so, next page. You know how I said that the premium cost up there, that first report, has gone down? So, I did the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three plan year. You can see our total cost, now, this is actual net of reinsurance reimbursements, okay? So, we got some specific money back, rebates would be in there offsetting the claims. So, we went from five million to four-six, to four-three, to three-eight for the year we just finished. Can I guarantee we're going to stay at three-eight? No, that'd be crazy.
No, we're going to go down.
Uh huh, okay. Just trying to prepare you a little bit.
But we only hire healthy people.
Okay, thank you. I, I did put your aggregate loss ratio just to give you, you know, I, I think I've educated you well. An eighty percent loss ratio is a good year. Well, you know, way back when, seventeen, we had a ninety-seven percent year. We had some horrific claims there, and we've gotten better since then, so, you know, we're holding our own there. Now, here's your funding requirements, and I tried to spell this out for you. Dunn is going to recommend that you have between thirty and fifty percent of your aggregate amount, which is just claims, just the claims. If you were to stop being self-funded, you're going to still have some runoff claims. Actually, I don't even think we'd hit thirty percent, because Dunn's paying the claims the day they hit our office. We don't have a big, long, remember I started out and said twenty-two days from the time we went to the time we get it paid? That's within a thirty-day turnaround time. So, I don't think we'd have extreme runoff.
So.
But you need to factor it in.
Let me ask you to clarify, so, we, we end our program in December.
Okay.
We buy insurance.
Fully insured.
Fully insured, starting January one. So, if I get sick in December on the self-insured plan, let's say I'm diagnosed with cancer, there's going to be a long-term treatment. Is just the treatment done by the end of the year covered under the old insurance? It's not, so if I do a treatment in December and a treatment every month for the next year?
So, if you started a new insurance, you went with Anthem fully insured, January one, any claims you incur in January would go with the new insurance.
And, and because prior, prior issues are, are covered.
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing conditions are covered, then it would go on to the new insurance.
Do they have a questionnaire, though, to fill out and identify when they put you in your quote, so it's just total?
Well, you, you as an employer would have to.
Report.
Report all your large claims and all the trigger diagnoses.
Before you get their quote for the, for them.
Yes, yes.
So, it's kind of like a built-in laser?
Yes, yes.
So, the runoff only pertains to actual treatments that were done before December, or by December.
And, and the claim hasn't gotten to Dunn to process yet.
Takes, takes a month, two months, maybe three months to process and get it through the system. So, that's all we're.
That's what we're talking, now, I, I am conservative on this, because most employers, whether private or public, you can't make money grow on trees, so.
Sure.
You know, do I really think we need thirty? Probably not, but I'm giving you a range of what would be a conservative amount to estimate, just in case, to cover, to cover everything. So, you know, thirty percent of our, we just did the renewal, I used that number from our renewal, our aggregate number. So, three point four million in claims. Okay, so I did thirty percent, fifty percent, I added it to our, I've got a copy of the renewal here, but I, I took the bottom line right off our renewal that we just did, and said, okay, take the renewal, plus I'll add the fudge factor for the runoff claims, so you're somewhere in the means of that. So, when I say, hey, look, you need to be able to cover this, those are the numbers I'm talking about.
Five point four one seven.
Yep. Or up to even six point one.
Right.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, from my, my years on council, the way I always looked at that was, we've got more than enough in the rainy day fund to cover the runout. We have four million.
You're getting it, yeah.
There's, there's what, a million, a million, forty thousand up to a million seven. So, as long as we have the rainy day fund.
Correct.
And we all understand that if we were to change and had to pay runout, that's something that, that we would pay, could pay from rainy day, we could pay from wherever we want to.
Correct, you just need to, I need to tell you what you are responsible for, so that you can figure out on your side, do we have it, where is it?
Sure.
You can't promise away that rainy day fund to twenty different things and not have it.
Exactly, and it's not promised to anything, except it's been the discussion that if we were to ever do that, there's money there.
Yes, okay, so, Jeff, I think you're understanding where I'm going. My job is to give you the big picture.
Sure, absolutely.
You guys figure out where you squirreled away money and are you good?
We really didn't squirrel it, so.
No, I know.
Just for the television audience, not squirreled it, it's very, very well played.
Brutally understood.
Exactly.
So, in a, in a period where Kathy showed you that your costs have been going down, we would expect that you've been building reserves over that time.
And, which, a different set of reserves.
Right here.
And we also know, just from experience, that every once in a while, we get a bad year. We had that happen in twenty-twenty. So, by having the reserves, if you would happen to have that bad year next year, when we came back for open enrollment for twenty-six, we wouldn't have to say, okay, you're going to have huge increases on contributions, and, you know, it wouldn't put you in that line because you have that.
But to have, to have four years in a row with as good a results as we have had, I would think is, is fairly, fairly rare.
Uh, no, I would, yes.
And the thing Kathy and I were talking about the other day, I mean, we're always fighting technology too, on the cost side. Just people have new hips and new knees all the time now. All these medicines are super expensive. I mean, you put five people on Stellara, and that's a half million dollars, and that's just for psoriasis. So, we can't control that, you guys can't control that. And that's just kind of the headwind that would somewhat face with everything advancing technology was.
So, I gave you your balances in your checking account, which is our operating fund, and you've got some investments in insured CDs there earning some interest, which goes into your plan. So, we have a balance of four point one right now. And that, that can change every month, you know, depending what our claims are, and it does.
And we look at it every week. Could you share that report with us?
Yes, we do. So, that, that's variable. However, this is where we ended up your June thirtieth plan year, okay? So, in my opinion, I think I've shared this before, it's easier on the employees to keep their contributions fairly level. You, you have and should periodically increase their contributions a little bit, but it's really hard if we have a really bad year and to come back and say, oh, we're going to raise yours, you know, twenty-five percent, a lot of households, that, that'd be a real burden. So, I think keeping a satisfactory level of reserves, and that's in the eyes of the beholder, but keeping reserves there helps you weather the storm if we have a bad year, that you don't have to come back and make drastic changes. Because we have good years too.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, does that, did I give you enough parts there that you followed the, where we are and.
Yes, so.
What your funding?
Let's, let's back up a little bit, and so, if we can agree that the runout is funded, and we talked to council, and they don't have any other particular uses for rainy day that are identified. that are identified for 2025, then I think we can discount the need to set any additional money aside for the runout.
No, I think you're well-covered there.
So that means that...
If you could stop just a second. Why would we have to turn to rainy day when we have such a healthy balance?
We wouldn't. But remember, when we started down that path, it was back when we had an 88% aggregate loss or a 97% aggregate loss. We started down that path 10 years ago. My point is, that money has been, has been kind of the backup for a long, long time, and there's no need to change that. And there's no, at least at this point, I'm unaware of councils looking at rainy day funding for anything.
Why would we even want to bring that up?
Because they need to know.
They need to know.
Council needs to know, and we need to discuss it.
I guess my question is, why wouldn't the Dunn Fund be our backup?
It can and it would, and this is kind of a theoretical exercise because we're not changing to a fully insured program. We're still on a self-funded program for the coming year. But I think council needs to understand and know that that logic has been in place for...
Because we have a bad year, and those uncomprised reserves suddenly depleted or dwindled significantly.
Exactly, and we have used those in the past to the tune of more than a million dollars a year.
Yes.
So in these bad years, in the mid-teens.
So I think we're pretty much on the same page. Because we've had good years for the last four or five years, we've built up the Dunn side of the reserves. So next year, if we had a really bad year, we wouldn't need the rainy day fund. We'd have plenty in our reserves.
Correct.
I think Jeff's...
More than a million, more than we've ever had to give.
Correct. So we're in good shape there, so we don't have... I don't think, on behalf of the health plan, I'm asking the council for any additional funding or to take in consideration anything in a rainy day fund. We're self-sufficient here, which is the idea, that whole goal.
At this point, we're good for you more than one bad year.
Probably, yeah.
But we need to actively manage
Yes.
what we're doing, and we need that information.
In fact, we need to actively realize we're kind of overdue for a bad year.
Absolutely. It just jinxed us.
I tried, I tried.
But realistically...
Yeah, that's what I said, four years in a row of, you know, 60 to 70%
That's incredible. I mean, how many of your clients have had four?
No, you're my star. You're my bold start right now.
I had a feeling, okay?
So back to the topic at hand. So we've got two parts that I would like you guys to discuss or give me some idea. I have some suggested benefits, but your plan's running very well. I didn't... Our impression on our side was that we aren't in a position where we needed to increase the employee contribution significantly at all. With that said, it could be a good year to leave it flat.
Which we did this past year.
You did this past year, so now I'm going to say, okay, my common sense, just a reminder, that if you do that year after year after year, you could come to a position where you have to jump it all up, and that's hard on people.
Right.
I'm going to talk the employee side of things. Because, you know, I play all sides here. So I caution you that you don't want to go too many years with no changes. Even a small 50 cent, a dollar increase still gives the impression that, you know, that contribution amount could change. You have to look at it every year. I don't think you're in a position where you have to jump it up a significant amount this year. So it's on, for your decision on what, you know, your longer-term game plan is, but we're in a very good position. We had a very good renewal that doesn't warrant a huge change in employee contributions.
Right. I mean, we see groups all the time get in trouble. They don't do, you know, 4.5, 4.5, 4.5, and then the fourth year they have a... They need 15, and so the employees see 2, 2, 2, 12 first. 15, I mean, it just hits them all at once, which is really hard to...
Yeah, clearly, we don't want to have a premium increase that bites in heavily to a salary ordinance increase. DLGF's forecasting, you know, 4% overall.
For property tax.
Yeah, property tax, right. And realistically, whether that kind of a salary increase is going to be forthcoming, we just, it's too early to know.
Recall, I mean, what you've done too. If you continue to take a conservative approach, and you still are building your reserves, there's the possibility of a premium holiday that has a way of...
Which we did last December.
We did December 23rd. We did do that.
Right, and there's...
And you could do that again.
And there's two kinds of premium holidays. Employee holiday and employer holiday. And what you have on this sheet of paper is the dual holiday of employee and employer.
That is correct, that my number of 413,000 represented both.
Which is what we did in 2020, sorry, correct. I suggest, in this spirit of let's accept our good fortune, but bolster ourselves for the future, and consider that other option of just having an employee holiday, but not take an employer premium holiday this year. That is an option.
It is an option.
If you don't like it.
I think it's too early to make that call. I think we need to let...
I just want to put it on the table.
I knew that you would. In fact, I'm surprised that you waited this long, you know, it's been... But I think we need to let council look at where we're at, what the requests are for funding, what are the potential raises going to be? I think there's a, there's a report from Erwin on what that should be to get to the midpoint. And potentially, one way to help pay for that would be an employer holiday along with the employee holiday. So, you know, that is, what'd you estimate here? $400,000 or...
Yeah, or 13 was what it was in December.
An employee holiday would only be 106,000.
I understand, but that does not make anybody available.
But it'd be about 53,000.
Does not make anybody available to council to disseminate on some of these requests, to take care of some of these requests. They can plan for that. It would be, you know, in the bank then, if we do that in December.
Okay, I'm going to move you on forward because I think this is a component of what your decisions will be. Okay? I want to get the benefits. Kim challenged me and said, "Hey, we're having a good year. You know, what would be some positives?" So I took it as a, let me look at, see if there's some, a few tweaks I'd make that would be positive for the employees without costing the plan too much. One thing, a couple of years ago, we raised it from 15,000 to 25,000 on the life insurance.
Right.
Just to give you some idea, if you wanted to go to 30,000, it costs you roughly, for a $5,000 increase, it's $3,600 annually. Okay? Well, again, you... Does that affect everybody? No, but it's good. You know, you don't have very many of those, but it's a positive for the overall atmosphere of you're looking out for us and helping us when we might really need it.
Okay.
For the family. Second, under the IRS, you have to have a $3,300 individual deductible in order to have it embedded. Meaning, once an individual hits that $3,300, then the claims start paying on that individual. Under HSA rules, you have to meet the whole family if you don't have the embedded deductible. Okay? Meaning, you have to meet the whole family $10,000 deductible. So you have a $5,000 plan, so that deductible does not need to be tweaked this year. Okay? You're at a level that we don't have to change it. Your $5,000 plan, you meet your deductible, and then the plan pays 100% after that. So that's all the out-of-pocket that you have. You, we did look and say, "Okay, what if you moved your 2,000 to 2,500?" Well, we had 29 people so far this year meet Plan A deductible. Okay? So if we went up $500, let's double the 29 to make it 58 people for a whole year. 58 times 500, it's $29,000 potential savings. Is that worth it? Not... I don't think that's significant. But I'm just giving you some numbers to go by, how we calculated. Okay, so if we don't increase the deductible co-insurance, you know, that doesn't, that falls out. I want to take you down the bottom right-hand corner. For 25, for 2025, the IRS made the maximum out-of-pocket amount. For Plan A, a traditional plan, is $9,200 for single. Double that for family. And for Plan B, it's $8,300. That means any combination of deductible, copays, co-insurance, that's the most out-of-pocket to be ACA compliant. Okay? You're nowhere near that. You're fine. I just wanted to tell you what the IRS limits are. Okay? Next page. We're seeing more and more air ambulance charges are out the wazoo, meaning could easily be $60,000 to $80,000 if an air ambulance picks you up. And they're out of network, and they negotiate the rates. The average payment for an air ambulance is between $17,000 and $23,000 nationally. $17,000, $23,000. The negotiated rate. So I'm going to suggest, instead of having limited to $10,000 per trip, I think, I think we'd better separate that to $10,000 for ground, $25,000 for air. And that would give us a chance to negotiate the air. And they're calling air ambulances a lot more than what they used to. They're much more available, and I think it's a moneymaker. But if that were my child or grandchild on that, you know, injured, I want him picked up and gotten to where we go. But that'll give us a chance to negotiate it in good faith. Okay? If, I'm trying to go both ways. Kind of, what would I tweak up? What would I enhance? If you wanted to increase your current copay at the emergency room, the reason you have a copay is to discourage people from running to the ER when that's not the appropriate level of care. $250 is very reasonable. If you did want to go to $300, you've had 130 visits, so it'd be $6,500 savings to the plan. Again, I think your $250 is very adequate. Okay? Next page. This is an enhancement. I'm kidney dialysis. The cost just keeps going up and up and up. I think we should tweak it and step 200% of Medicare. I think 250 is what I'm seeing the rates out there that they're accepting. So just so we don't get into an appeal situation, let's just tweak that. What my, what your allowable is per plan. It's not that much. It's like $20 a treatment, and you've got a limit of the 50 treatments. So I just want to stay in the range of what the dialysis companies are accepting.
It'd be a thousand per patient.
Yeah, maybe. And we haven't had a dialysis for several years, so I just want to stay abreast of what the acceptable reasonable customary level is. We do have a $25 copay for office visits and for mental health visits. Mental health, under the MPEA statutes, the Mental Health Parity Act, we have to pay all mental health office visits the same as a medical office visit, and we do. So you've got both of them there. Down at the bottom, you've had 2,929 visits. So if we were to increase a $5 copay, that includes both mental health and medical, it'd be a $14,000 savings to the plan. An alternative for that, because you have two visits paid a year at 100%, both plans. It's incidental, but why don't we increase that to three this year? I think your employees would see that as a very good enhancement to your plan. So if you're looking for positives, you could go to three visits per year. Do you need to? No. That's reasonable. I don't think it jeopardizes your high deductible plan qualifying for your HSA. It's limited coverage. It's only for family physicians, you know. It's not for specialists. So if you were looking for some enhancements, that's one I might do.
Do you know right off how many, what the increase was in visits? 24 versus 23?
Your average employee has 1.7 visits to the doctor.
This year compared to the prior year?
The last 12 months. So most people are not using two.
Even with the generosity this year?
Yeah.
So if they didn't use two, then why would they consider three a benefit?
Well, in case they needed it. But will everybody use three? No.
Do you know what it was before we added that benefit? Did it go to 1.7?
Yeah, it was lower than 1.7. I want to say 1.2, 1.3.
So it wasn't perceived benefit?
Well, here's the deal. Healthcare costs so much. People are paying more at the grocery store. They're paying more at the gas station. They think twice about going to the doctor because it's going to, it's going to apply to my deductible. It's going to cost me. So if we have one or two visits, if you really need to go, go. Now, if you're habitual offender and you go every week, you're not, you know, eventually your deductible kicks in and, you know, you're into ongoing treatment. Again, I use Swift MD for convenience, which is at no cost. So...
That's per?
I think families.
Individual? So if you've got five kids, seven individuals?
I think families with kids worry about that.
You know, and it probably can reduce the spread of disease within a department.
Could.
But it did work. I mean, it did increase the office visits.
It did.
That's what I want to know. Thank you.
I was just trying to think of some positives, okay? Without it costing the plan.
I'd be willing to consider that. Now, that would be three visits per belly button.
Year, yeah, per belly button.
Yeah.
Again, I probably still encourage Swift MD for...
Right, and we should. Probably need to need to keep that in front of people more frequently than we do. That it's, it's available to everybody.
Okay, so now, the next one, I think this is a reasonable one. In physiotherapy, we have different types of therapies. You're at 20 visits. I kind of track what, you know, in healthcare, Anthem, Cigna, all of them are probably the vast majority of those plans are all at 25 visits. I think that would be fine. It takes a pretty good surgery usually, or an injury, to use 25 visits, like a hip replacement, a major surgery. There are times when somebody needs more than that, and we, they appeal it, and we review it, and it's got to be medically justified that more services would be appropriate. So I'm going to suggest that we go ahead and go to 25 visits.
This is different than rehab from a cardio surgery?
Well, cardiac rehab's down there for 36 sessions. It's right there at the bottom. It's right there at the bottom. So I would...
This is physiotherapy like after a surgery?
Yeah. Or, or you've been injured. Yeah, you broke in your ankle and now you need some rehab. Most, most people don't go for 20 visits, let alone 25. But I think for, um, some major things, 25 would be a nice enhancement.
Kind of like knee replacements often have complications like infection and stuff. If they're, if it's straightforward and complicated, it's going to be 20 or so. But if there's any complication, it can go higher.
It can. And again, track that to make sure it's medically necessary. You're urgent care, well, that copay should follow along whatever you do with an office visit copay.
But these are, these are not free. These are after deductible, if that makes sense.
Right.
But the sort of, if they had a surgery, that probably covers their deductible, just the surgery.
Okay, uh, I've got another TrueRx report. Now, vision, we get some calls on this. So I'm going to share with you what, um, a couple of years ago or, or last year, we went up to 400. The calls we get that my staff relays to me is that, did we not understand that a pair of glasses costs more than $400? Yes, I understand that. But $400 is a nice benefit for your use. If you went to $500, you know, that's going to cost the plan an extra $13,000. I would say from the number...
Based on the number of people that used it last year.
Mm-hmm. So I don't think it'd cost an arm and leg. But again, you know, these are little incremental tweaks. But, but that is when we get calls on. Now, I think they really appreciate the vision benefit. They'd really appreciate if it's 800. I'm not going to recommend you go that high, so.
What do you, prescription glasses really cost?
Depends on where you get them.
Seven to a thousand, but it depends on where you go.
If you get them from your eye doctor versus going to, you know, one of the, the budget glasses places that are advertised on TV.
I've never spent more than $300 or $400 for glasses.
Oh, but if you get them at your eye doctor, they're probably anywhere $600, $800, maybe a thousand, depending on what...
You can tell you how much they are. They're $700 to a thousand.
But you choose to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, you could also go to...
It's under my wife's vision plan, so don't worry about it, guys.
There you go. Um, and along that same thing, we don't get as many calls, but, you know, we only pay a couple of hearing aid bills a year. I mean, like, we had one in the last 12 months. But we're at 1,500. You could go to 2,000. Again, hearing aids are running between $5,000 to $8,000. We have it now every five years. The other tweak could be every three years if you wanted to. But, um...
2,000 every one, 2,000 a year, but every three years?
Every three, 2,000 every three. Right now, it's every five years. Okay? Uh, I, I was just, again, you have very few of those claims, but the price seems to go up. So I thought, okay, you could tweak it a tad bit there. But that doesn't affect a lot of people.
So the cost to the plan would be small.
To 2,000 every three years. Is that what schools?
Hmm, I, I think I had, no, I think theirs is every five years.
But it's 2,000?
I think it is. I don't know.
I just, I'm on the one that they had.
Okay, so down there at the bottom, your working spouse rule. You know, right now, you have it such that if a spouse works and is eligible for insurance, if they take out their own insurance, they could still be secondary here. The majority of working spouse rules, and that was a kind of an in-between when we first implemented that. Most of them say if your spouse works and is eligible for insurance, then they don't have coverage here. You could just go full for working spouse rule. I, I put on there, number two was increase the office visits from two to three. Add CanRx. We're in the process of doing this. CanRx is international sourcing for drugs. And we've showed Kim some reports. We already have a few people doing that. But, um, I want to emphasize that in the open enrollment plan. Okay, now, if they can get their drugs through CanRx, there's no copay. The plan pays the full cost. To give you some idea, Stellara is $28,000 a month. And it goes down to $6,800 for three months.
How they issue that, or do they?
Um, we can help them. You have to fill your first script in the US and then your doctor can write the script and you can send it to CanRx. But it's significant savings for a lot of these expensive drugs. They don't have all drugs. But for the ones that can, it might be a good option if they don't qualify for patient assistance. This would be a tremendous savings for the plan. TrueRx now also will check for international sourcing for some of the high-cost drugs. So they're building it into their plan as well. Okay? Again, if we can't get patient assistance, where can we get it at a fraction of the cost? So it works well. Another thought for you. Kim asked me, you know, we need some positives. This year, you are contributing $1,000 to HSA and we do it quarterly. You could increase that. You could increase it for one year. You've had a good year. You're not, I don't necessarily think you should set it up that you're always going to contribute to the HSA. But to get people started, you decided you would. And you've been in a position to repeat that last year, this year. You're probably in a fairly good position, so I'm just throwing that out. That's a possibility. Okay?
Are there limitations on how much that can be?
Yes. Um, I think the HSA for individuals is, is it $4,300 for next year?
You know, it just changed.
So it's significantly higher than where we're at?
Yes. Yes, you're, you're not up against that. But in working with payroll, whatever you put in counts towards the IRS maximum and combined with what the employee puts in. So we check those amounts to make sure somebody doesn't exceed the IRS limits.
Which is what?
Like $4,300.
So that's, that's the, that's the max, okay.
$4,300 or something like that.
Single. And another thousand if you're over 55.
So if we did, we do a thousand, so all they can contribute is 3,300?
Correct.
And if we did 2,000, they could only contribute?
Correct. The combination has to be, can't exceed the IRS maximum. Just want to point that out.
Okay.
Do you recall if we ran into that problem with $1,000 last year?
A bank, a bank caught one last year.
Two people, I think, put in the maximum.
The banks monitored you.
Yes.
So we were fail-safe on that.
Yep.
So there's a possibility, instead of doing a holiday, we could, for those who have health insurance.
Correct.
Well, everybody would be.
Now, wait a minute.
We could put that holiday premium into the HSA.
Well, not everybody has an HSA. You have to be on, uh, the...
Well, what did we do for those that didn't have an HSA? We, we primed the pump by starting an HSA, right?
Well, you can't. You have to be covered under a high deductible health plan to qualify. So if they're on the traditional plan, they don't qualify. But what you do have is you have FSA, Flex, which is very similar to HSA. And, and you have numerous people on that, that do some 60-some people under that.
That's increased, isn't it?
But, yes. And then you also have the HRA, which is your wellness plan where they earn credits. And HRA, same thing as, as all this. You can use it, same type of plan that you can use it to pay for your deductible and your out-of-pocket expenses, your copays for qualified expenses. And all the same, um, criteria for what type of expense you can run through your plans, that's all the same. Um, under Flex, FSA, it's a use it or lose it. Under HRA, that's employer funded. So if you were going to say everybody gets something, you could do it straight into the HSA. And for those who don't have an HSA, if they have an HRA or if they don't, we can start them an HRA and put money on their debit card that they can use.
I think they'd rather have the cash.
But don't get it in the FSA. That's the employer portion.
That would not, not go away at the end of the year.
No, but if they ever leave employment, the money still be, it stays with the employer. They can't. If they got legitimate claims that we can pay out with the right...
So that's not a very attractive option, especially in December. They'd rather have the cash.
Well, they would rather have the cash. But, uh, you know, the issue for me is...
Well, taxes on the cash part.
Correct. And taking it a step further, uh, the, the high deductible plan has significantly lower premiums.
Yes.
And so a, a holiday gives them significantly less than it does to people on the regular plan. So I, we need to think about that a little bit.
But they're taking much higher risk.
For the high deductible?
Right, yeah.
Exactly. But that's why they have a lower premium, because the, the hope is that they would, they would...
Save.
Put some of that into their savings plan.
Pay now or pay later?
Right.
Basically what it comes down to.
But the, one thought is there's a different mindset with the high deductible plan. Do I need to go to the ER or could I use Swift MD at no cost? I know it's going to apply to my deductible at the ER. I have a urinary tract infection. I can use Swift MD with no, no cost to me. You know? So there's some education, there's some trades that, that, you know, how you use the plan might, might be good. Might be different with those. Okay, so I, I tried to throw some ideas out to you. None of these were, uh, significant, you know, we grossly...
Cost too much.
Yeah, none of them, but, you know, if you start adding up, there's, there's savings you could do too.
When do we need it designed?
Um, Kim would say yesterday, but, you know.
I guess I'd also look and see, when do you need that information to set up? To prepare us for open enrollment?
Your open enrollment was handled first part of October last year. I would suggest that we do that again. That seemed to be good timing. So I would think within the next month, if we had that information, we could prepare the packets and be ready for open enrollment. So I'm going to say in August. If that works for you guys.
It might.
Okay.
So is this the sum of your recommendations?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay, so because of the past, it seems to be like...
I had more.
You have a lot more, a lot more definitive recommendations than here's 32 different options.
My opinion, what I would do? I would be okay if you increased the life insurance 5,000. I don't think you need to jump from 25 to 50. I'd go 30. I think that's just nice, that you look at those kind of things. I wouldn't change the deduct for out-of-pocket. I don't, I think your plans are working for you. I, I would leave that. Which, most people see that as the plan design. I would add the air ambulance. I'm asking you to do that.
Okay.
I wouldn't touch ER copays. Kidney dialysis, that's just an update. We could do it on our side, but I think you, you need to stay within the reasonable customary limits.
So we need to change that?
Change that to 250% of Medicare.
And again, we have no current claims. We haven't had any claims on that for, I want to say, three years. I would not change your office visit copays. I let, let them be. I would add the third visit if you're looking for a positive enhancement. So I'm about 50/50 on that. Two is working. The majority of people are under two visits a year. But if you wanted to add something, I would add the third visit.
It's pretty cheap and it has benefits.
For both mental health and physician office.
Yeah.
You have to balance them, right? You don't have any choice.
Yes, we're doing the same way. Okay, so urgent care, you don't need to increase that copay. I wouldn't, I wouldn't increase copays. I would, up at the top, physiotherapy, I would go 25. That keeps us in, in the majority of plans. I've got a report on, uh, copays. To go to a flat copay, uh, it was going to save us $544 for six months. So $1,000 per year, we're not doing that. Uh, and the other one, tweaking the copays up just a little bit, we were going to save $13,000 per year, not touching it.
So basically only five changes?
Well, how do you feel about vision? I'm, I'm 50/50, I was trying to find things. Do, do you want to increase the vision or the hearing?
How much would it cost to go to 500?
$13,000.
That's what they cost.
Well, it's what they can cost though. I, I just think we need to encourage people to shop a little bit.
Yeah.
They can get, they can get glasses for $400.
Now, remember, you're contributing $1,000 to the HSA.
Right.
If I don't have, if I just have preventative claims, I use Swift MD, you, you've paid my extra for my glasses if, if you want to look at it that way. If I don't use that thousand for something else.
And I always get my glasses for my optometrists. Well, when I needed them. Now, I've heard, I can't readers, but, um, and I've never spent more than $350. It depends on your optometrist.
What do you think, Brad?
Depends what table foot is wearing.
Yeah, probably.
Vanity is not...
I don't know that you need, I, I, I'm not real sold on vision or hearing changes. I probably...
You say you've heard that from people who've called in. Can you give us any idea of, did you hear it 50 times or twice?
No, I'd probably say dozen times.
A dozen times? They didn't say thank you so much for increasing the vision plan?
Let me say it again.
Yeah, but when people hear the word insurance, they think it's going to pay everything. And, I mean, having done this for 40 years, I always tell people, vision insurance isn't there to pay for everything. It's just there to help you.
It's assessment.
Yeah, and it's...
Let's call it partial insurance.
Hey, it's a nice added, you don't have a full plan.
What part of the insurance pays the office visit? Or is it the flat 500 or 300 now, right? What's a pay now for the vision test?
Oh, it used to be $30, $35. Now it's 70 to 100 for the exam. You're talking for an exam.
On top of the glasses.
Well, it, you get that.
It comes out of that 400.
That's your exam.
It's 400. Get your exam, get your script, and then go to the discount store.
Right.
Yeah. You can order online now. Keeps and eye box. You do the end of the year and the beginning of the year. You do do that too. You do do that. I, I'm not sold on that. I, I would...
I'm not either. 400 is...
We just...
Did that help you?
Yes, it, it did.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think HSA contribution, 1,000 is very nice. A lot of plans, they do it for the first year or two and then they don't do it after that. But you're in a position to keep doing that. I think a premium holiday affects everybody versus HSA is your high deductible plan.
But if we, if we suggested a compromise of add a little bit of money to the HSA and... and have a premium holiday, which is gonna affect people differently depending on which plan they're on and whether they're in a family plan versus an individual plan. So that way we could try to balance things out.
I think the only fair thing to do is have a hybrid holiday. Have the cash holiday for the employees, but have the employer's premium go into HSA, HRA, a mix of contributions to the HRA, HSA.
I'd need to think about that.
I think it's something to think about. So we kinda equalize, you know, if somebody's on a high deductible. You know, I think we could craft that, but I don't like the employer taking a holiday just because we're giving the employee a holiday. I think the employer can use that $333,000 to greater benefit, you know, to leverage participation to, you know, introduce people to, you know, something, to really benefit the employees more and to encourage healthfulness in, you know.
I think that's what the $4 million reserves is there for. So, okay.
Okay, last report.
I mean, this would actually put it to work in a very practical way.
Last report, this past year we added the ONTRAP program through TRx. And that's a diabetic management coaching program. So you've had nine members enrolled out of 44 identified diabetes. We got, so that engagement rate's what we still consider pretty low.
And so is there some method we're using to communicate with those folks that.
TRx has reached out. We're gonna do some more targeting. You know, maybe a call from me.
That's a long time.
It is, but.
They were at the health fair.
They were.
Because normally they don't come and they did because. Yes, and then we also added this to our wellness plan that if you participate in this program, that's $50 into that wellness plan of the max by Ibris. We actually added all of what TRx, we added that to the wellness. So their incentive is $50. And they still won't do it.
So now it's, we gotta go hit them over the head, really communicate directly with them. You know, hey, we're talking to you. And I found some, I'm starting to do that on a couple other groups. And that, oh, well, I didn't really think it mattered, you know, why don't you try it? So we're gonna come at it a little bit harder. TRx, in their pilot programs for this, they've got return on investment, cost of the program versus, they're getting about 50% of the participants are lowering their usage of drugs or cutting out the drugs altogether. So that's long-term effect. So I haven't given up on it. I just need to get people engaged.
Is that, Kim, is that something that the wellness committee might look at, what else could be done from that perspective?
Unless we wanna up that $50, I don't know what else we can do. Because we, in general, we're gonna have to address the whole group. We are. You don't have to, we do. Because we don't know, cannot identify, but I mean, we can up.
We're gonna go directly to them.
Okay, okay.
So we need it on all fronts, but I still think, did you see how much you were paying on the diabetic drugs? Okay. I think you want me to work on this.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think targeting marketing on that one is.
It's gonna double every year forever.
Is at, I'm not gonna worry about it.
Well, could they get some free supplies? I don't wanna say free. The plan pays for it, waive their copay. I don't think they'd get that part.
About a personal testimony of someone who's using it with those benefits.
Okay, that's.
Because one just spoke to me.
Okay, and?
Over the moon happy with it.
Okay.
Would he or she be willing to go public?
Don't know.
Well, there's nothing like a personal testimony.
Going public would be, going public privately with that list of people that have that diagnosis, right? And you would do that because you know who they are. We don't know who they are.
Correct. It should not be in the HR.
Exactly.
Right, no, we wouldn't have to, it could just be a three-year county employee who says this, you know.
Yes, but we've gotten some good response for those that really engage. But when you can get off all the medicine and you feel a lot better and you've lost a lot of weight doing it by walking and eating better and the coach is calling you, for those that it works for, we have some good success. We won't win everybody over, but if we can help a few people be healthier, that's great. Great for the plan too. So, okay, did I give you enough to think about? Did I answer your questions and give you the parts?
Oh, yes.
Can you say it to Kim? Not in a big book form, but here's the bullet points. These are the things that I recommend you change in the plan.
I can do that.
Thank you. Okay, anything else from you guys? Thanks a lot for being here. Appreciate it. And keep up the good work. I'm very happy with what you all are doing for us.
Just one last part of the thought. At some point, you probably claim cost will go up a little bit. Can I say that?
Yeah, but not soon. Not soon because you're in a panic. You're that good.
Some of this could be lost.
Jim, I'm gonna walk around, but before you do, explain anything before you talk about this.
Sure.
You told me to write it down for you.
I know, but I'm trying to remember the acronym. What the heck is it? What does it mean?
Record. There you go. There's your test for the record.
Patient-centered.
Outcomes, research. This is, that's why they were gonna decide who was gonna get the treatments or not. We've seen nothing come out of that, but you're paying a tax.
AKA tax.
And we have only 2,000 budgeted and the bill is 23.
We're about 23 something.
Pay it once a year. It's a certain dollar amount based on.
Well, that's the Fed, the Fed hit?
And it's due July 30th to the IRS. That's why it's.
Kim, I'm gonna be sure for Pam or anybody.
Yes.
Walk out.
I'll be, I'll be right back.
Okay, so what did you give to Ron to look at? Is that a client?
Best assumed claim, $400,000. I just wanted to take a look at that.
It's a couple hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, do you have?
Do you wanna do those now? I'm not questioning whether you have to pay it. I just couldn't believe it.
We think we have to.
Are we, are we to that on the agenda?
I think so. That was all that was on the agenda.
I won't comment on it. I just think before we approve it, you both should have an opportunity to see it. It's pretty extraordinary. While you're reviewing that, I would like to move for approval of Commissioner's minutes dated July 10th.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye. Also, we'd like to move for approval of MasterCard claims dated today, July 17th. Veteran assistance claims dated July 10th. Payment due to a bank error.
$200? Is this bank error in your favor?
Bank error in your favor for $1,235.70.
There's inflation for you.
Bank error and spring settlement. Interesting. For $12,357.0 dated July 15th. Center, also center point utility claim dated, I don't have my glasses.
Good idea.
My $10 glasses, I'll point out. Center point claim dated July 16th. And regular claims dated today, July 17th. Move for approval of all of these.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I also would like to move for approval after you've had a chance to view that for the sealed claim from Circuit Court.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the sealed claim. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, so the Pickory bill, about $2,400. We have $2,000 in a line item that we set up last year to pay for this. This is essentially a tax because we have a self-insured employee health program. And the federal government uses that money to do research into self-insured health insurance programs. So they tell us how much it is and we pay it. I think for next year, we'll have to try to increase that line item, but I would suggest that this year we pay 2,000 out of this line item and 400 out of our contractual line item.
That's all we're over is $400?
It's a little less than 400 that we're under. We only have 2,000.
And we still got a little bit left in contractual.
A little bit.
I move that we, did you move that? Or I will so move that we do that.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pay the balance of the Pickory bill out of contractual line item. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else? Can you ask Ron to step in so that we can see if we're ready to close the meeting? Hey, anything else that we need to do that you're aware of? No?
The well care. I guess that.
There were campaigning at 12:30.
12?
Yeah, they were running.
Oh, okay. Okay, tell them, tell them thank you for me. If my stomach growls all through.
So we reconvene?
No, no, the council is reconvening at 12:30. Anything that we need to do from a legal perspective before we adjourn our meeting?
Oh, no, not that I'm aware of. No, I'm here. I guess I should send you that. We have next week, I think Bobby got a question from somebody that said, what format of a meeting would be? But it's just gonna be, you know, as you would expect, you'll conduct it. I think start with the summary of what your findings were, the map, and what have you. I don't know if somebody's out there getting their own survey. That's fine. If they do, obviously you're probably not gonna be able to finalize anything tomorrow. You're gonna have to probably give it to Gordon to critique or review. But if they don't, then just open it up for public comment, questions. You need to have Gordon there or somebody from his office.
So I'm thinking we need Gordon and you to summarize where we're at, right?
Yeah, explain the situation, how it works.
Okay.
I had said we might file an action to have it declared, which I can, I don't think we need to do that. We've just done enough money. And legal advertising of the findings and the maps.
Okay. We did approve the sealed claims, so.
Yes, I think the question was whether that's final, and I can't really tell without going through.
Oh, just, I've, I've wandered your eyes on it, just so we were aware.
I don't know.
The judges said that in 30 to 60 days, they'll be able to say that it's.
And then somewhere along the line, I just wanna know what the total was. Anybody still track that with us?
I've just had a running total in the back of my mind.
Yes. All right, if there is nothing else, Steve, anything from you?
I do have a question about tomorrow night's presentation of the animal study. Because at the outset, the agreement was she would present to the commissioners and the city of Richmond that funded the study. While she's here, has there ever been any discussion that she would meet with us? I mean, the whole idea was the city and the county would be funding this and she would present with us and talk with us?
She will, yes. But not jointly. So do you, what time? I'll get with you and we'll schedule a time when you can meet with her tomorrow.
Oh, okay, because I, she's not here today.
She's not here today.
She's not gonna present to the city?
She's meeting with some folks tomorrow. She's meeting with Brad. But if you will meet with her.
Well, I mean, yeah, the, you know, the county funded that. I mean, the whole idea was that we were going to sit down and talk about her recommendations.
We will arrange for a meeting for you.
Well, I was hoping she would meet with the commissioners.
She's not planning to meet with the commissioners in a public meeting. But she would meet with her if you would like to.
What time are you meeting her? In Burberry? Two? Two o'clock.
And that's with, that is with.
The foundation.
The, the dog wardens, whatever we call them, animal control officers.
So there's a meeting tomorrow at the foundation?
Not a public meeting. Brad is meeting with her and you can meet with her at the foundation if you want to. And you can give me some times when you would be available.
Well, I'd like to go to that meeting if she's gonna be presenting.
You both can't go at the same time.
Oh, we go to meetings all the time. I mean, if this is a foundation meeting, we've been to foundation meetings before.
I don't wanna hear that. The two of you there for something, it's not like a seminar or.
Or a house meeting.
That's.
I mean, we've gone to Chamber of Commerce meetings. This is a foundation meeting.
This is, this is not a foundation meeting per se, as much as it is a meeting at the foundation.
They, she coordinated it.
I mean, the agreement was, she was gonna present to the commissioners her findings. And I question, when is that satisfaction of the agreement going to be satisfied? I mean, when is that going to occur?
Did you?
I didn't sign any of those.
I don't even know if there's a place to sign. There's no flag, so I'm not sure where.
Oh, yeah, we just sign on the front page, yeah.
On that?
Yeah, that's what we've done. That's when there's no signature block.
All right, so we'll finish signing these offline.
So you have, have you ever met with her, Jen?
I've talked to her on the phone.
So, I mean, the whole idea of spending tens of thousands of dollars was to get her expert recommendations for how we deal with. was to get her expert recommendations for how we deal with this serious problem.
And we're getting those, because she's going to present on them. Tomorrow night, 6 o'clock.
And so we're supposed to go to McGuire Hall to listen to her present to the community her recommendations on which county action will be taken as a result of McGuire Hall presentation. Even though we hired her for tens of thousands of dollars to do this, as a result of
But I don't think the presentation's going to change whether she does it to us or to general public.
I mean, normally when you hire a consultant, they, they come down and you talk to them in a meeting like this.
Do you want to talk to her tomorrow?
I want her to present to the commissioners and we can have an exchange of ideas like we just did with Dunn.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I want to meet with her, I'm, I would like to go to the foundation because I assume
Okay.
That she's going to have an exchange of thoughts.
I'll schedule a meeting for you.
So
Second.
I am not happy
Further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. We are adjourned.